City of Norco, City Council regular, excuse me, yeah, the regular meeting. Call to order, City Clerk for the roll call, please.
Councilmember Hannah, Councilmember Newton, Mayor Portem Grunmeyer, Mayor Hoffman.
Yes.
And please let the record show that Councilmember Bash is absent.
Before we close, any, before a closed session, are there any speaker cards, are there any cards? No cards, seeing as there was no cards, recess to closed session, thank you. And good evening, everyone. Council, I just came back from closed session, are there anything to report?
No, the council considered the matter listed on the agenda, which was potential litigation and no reportable actions.
Okay. Please stand, for the place of allegiance, my Councilman Hannah.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for Pastor Phil. From the Grace Fellowship Church.
All right, good evening, everyone, great to be with you again, and to ask God's blessing on our proceedings, so why don't we pray together. Heavenly Father, we come to you, Lord, and we thank you, that you, God, you are the Creator and Sustainer of life, and that, Lord, you have given to man the ability and authority to rule and reign over your creation, and, Lord, we thank you for the authority you've given, Lord, to be a blessing to the citizens of this city, for the council and other members, Lord, to help govern with wisdom and integrity all that happens within our great city, and, Lord, we pray your blessing on tonight. We pray for unity, we pray for truth, we pray for wisdom in every decision that's made, and we pray, Lord, that we would know your blessing here in Norco and recognize that it comes from you, and in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Phil. Just for purposes, if you notice, one of the councilmembers is missing, Councilman Bash is up in Monterey, he is in a study session for the CCA, it's California Community Project, where we're trying to find out for electrical services that we joined, so he's in a two-day conference up there, and that's, hopefully he'll bring back some good information next time. So, we have presentations today from the I-15 group.
Good evening, Mayor Hoffman, and councilmembers and citizens of Norco. Thanks for having me, I'm David Thomas with RCTC, I'm the project manager for the 91 Express Lanes, or the 91, I'm sorry, the I-15 Express Lanes Project, I was on the 91. So happy to be here tonight, the reason I'm here tonight is we're really starting to get started with our construction within the city limits of Norco, so you'll get more of an update on that, but before I get to that, just want to give you kind of a background here on the project, we'll get into more details. One moment. There we go. So just to refresh your memory, for those that may not recall, the project limits basically span from Cahalka Road in South Corona up to State Route 60, we're basically building 15 miles of two express lanes in each direction, construction's primarily in the median, and there is some bridge widening as well, we have 11 bridges that were widening with the project, most of those are widens in the median, but there is some outside widening as well in the I-15, 91 interchange area. One of the unique aspects of this project, different from the 91 project, is that we have multiple access points, kind of each city along the corridor has its own access in and out of the express lanes, and I'll get into more detail on that topic, specific to Norco here, coming up. Working now? Okay, so this project, some of the benefits here, this is a commitment from the Measure A program, RCTC, Riverside County Transportation Commission oversees the Measure A half-cent sales tax that was approved by voters, this is one of the projects in that plan, the commitment in that plan was actually to construct one lane with this project because we're able to leverage future toll revenue that will be generated by the express lanes, we're able to construct two express lanes with this project. Total project investment is about $471 million. This project also, prior to the project, RCTC commissioned a study to look at job creation with this project, both temporary during construction as well as permanent jobs, this project will generate, is estimated to generate about 3,300 jobs during the construction, which we're in now, which is a design-build phase, as well as support projects within the county going forward, permanent jobs within the county. I mentioned this is a design-build project, what that means is the design and the construction is being done at the same time, with one contracting entity that we're contracting with to do that, the Skanska Ames Joint Venture is our design builder, so we refer to that entity as the design builder rather than just contractor, because they're responsible for both the design and the construction. We're currently about 90% complete with design and about 10% into the construction work, so you can see there's a slight overlap, but we will finish most of the design before we get too far into the construction. This project is constructing express lanes, express lanes are toll, tolled lanes on the freeway, which give travelers an option to travel, most of the time congestion-free, reliability of travel time is what you're paying for through that toll, so it is a choice, this also expands RCTC's network, this is our second express lane project, the 91 extension was the first, and these two will connect together. One of the benefits of this project, too, there's a transit benefit in that it does support the express bus service that will use these routes as well. Just a little bit of the history and schedule looking forward, so we began this procurement for the design-build contract back in early 2016, mid-2016, we had environmental approval of this project to go forward, we have two contracts that are underway right now, we have a contract that was awarded in January 2017 for the toll facilities, those are the devices that basically are going to read the transponders in the cars, so it's kind of the background to the toll facility that's being developed simultaneously with the design-build contract that was awarded in April of 2017. We just started construction here recently, up in the Limonite area, we wanted to get started and kind of out of that area before the Limonite Interchange Project, which has just kicked off here in late August, and so we are now out of that area and moving to the north from there. The express lanes are expected to open in mid-2020, is what we're all working toward, and currently we're on schedule for that. Just a cross-section of what the project will look like when it's completed, you see the widening that we're doing in the median down below, it will look a lot like the 91 express lanes, it'll be separated with channelizers, however, again, one major difference is just the number of access points we have along the corridor. Excellent. So just zooming in on the Norco area, we have an access opening in the express lanes proposed between the Second and Sixth Street exits off the 15 freeway. So basically, if you're entering at Second Street headed northbound, you would be able to enter into the express lanes, you'd have about eight miles or so of express lanes up to State Route 60, and then coming south, if you enter from Sixth Street, you would be able to enter into the express lanes or Second Street, and enter into the express lane network at that point, which will have access to the rest of the route to the south, and something I'm going to talk about in a minute here is a connection to the 91 as So you may have heard, or you may not be aware, that last year we received special funding for a project within Riverside County for this express lane connector project. The red connector that you see on this plan is what we're currently working on, the green connector was constructed with the 91 project, so there is a connection from the express lanes on the 91 eastbound to South 15 today, and from northbound 15 to westbound 91 express lanes, but that doesn't help Norco much, so the good news here is that we have a connector that is in the works to go to and from the north, similar to the one to the south. This connector, we received funding last year, we're looking to amend the current I-15 express lane contract, which we find to be the most expedited way to deliver this connector, we have authority to do that, and we're looking to deliver this connector about two years after the opening of the express lanes, so a little bit of a delay, but that's the current schedule that we're working towards, so summer of 2022. Just a little bit more about how the express lanes will operate, some differences, if you're familiar with the 91 express lanes, but some similarities as well. All express lanes within the state of California require the use of a transponder, having a Fast Track account, there are several different agencies that you can get an account with, RCTC being one of them, so once you have an account, you purchase the transponder with that account, the transponder needs to be in the vehicle that is using that facility at the time it's using the facility, there's some confusion about that, not all agencies practice that same practice, but RCTC's facilities, including the 91 in Orange County, requires that you have that Fast Track transponder in the vehicle that's using it. The sample that you see up here on the screen is what we call a switchable transponder, you can declare your occupancy with this transponder, if you're familiar with the 91 project, there's actually a separate lane, a declaration lane, that you move into when you have three or more passengers in the vehicle to declare your occupancy and to receive the discount. On the 15, because we have so many access points, it would just be very challenging to have these weave lanes in and out all over the place, so we're using what really the rest of California is using, which is a switchable transponder, so again, this can be used in any facility to declare your occupancy, and you must have it in the vehicle. Another difference, a change with the I-15 express lanes, is we're using dynamic pricing, and this is a way that we keep the lanes free-flow, it will use, it'll pick up, there'll be sensors that'll pick up the traffic volumes in the lanes throughout the corridor about every half-mile, and we'll be able to adjust the pricing to guarantee that free-flow trip within the express lanes, the pricing could change as often as every five or six minutes on this facility. Different from the 91 facility, that's a variable time-of-day pricing, where those rates are actually posted to a website, they're looked at quarterly for adjustments, but they basically don't change, they change depending on the hour, but it's a published rate that doesn't change dynamically like the I-15 will. We are constructing an operations center in Corona, actually, with an attached customer service center to service the I-15 express lanes, that's part of this project development. Something about toll revenue, I mentioned earlier that the toll revenue is able to basically loan us money that we can build more capacity with, so the TIFI alone, it's a federal loan that we have to repay, it's a 35-year loan for this project, and so the toll revenue, kind of the first place that the money goes, that gets received from the toll revenue, goes to pay for the operations and maintenance of the facility, but also repaying that TIFI loan for the project. If there is excess toll revenue, that, by legislation, we're required to keep that revenue within the corridor, RCTC's commission, which is represented by all the cities and counties, or county supervisors within Riverside County, will decide on the use of that funding for future projects, but it has to be used within the I-15 corridor, any future project, so it doesn't, any excess toll revenue doesn't go back to the state, it stays local, and our commission decides on how the funding is utilized. May be aware of a couple other projects within the corridor, the I-15 Cahalka Interchange in South Corona has been under construction for some time, I mentioned the Limonite Interchange that's just kicked off, those two projects and the I-15 express lane project are probably the three biggest projects to be aware of, there are different closures by each project, we've been coordinating with those projects since the beginning of when we started and when those projects started, one of the things we do is a quarterly Public Information Officer's Roundtable, just to give updates on our projects, but we also have weekly and some bi-weekly meetings with the two different project teams on upcoming closures. We also had a kickoff meeting earlier this year with the first responders, and we've been in pretty much constant contact with CHP on this project, we use a lot of CHP, what we call Cozy, for our closures, lane closures that we do at night, we always have CHP out there with us. What are we doing in Norco, what's coming up, basically you've probably seen the construction on the Second and Third Street bridges, this is really the first construction we started in Norco, so the median is what you're looking at in these photos, the median of the freeway is basically going to be closed, and we're currently working on the abutment, these are single-span bridges, so after we complete the abutment supports, we'll be bringing in precast girders, this project uses all precast girders for our bridges, which means we can construct that off-site and then bring them on when they're ready to be installed, a lot less impact to the traveling public. We will have some daytime lane closures for construction, we have been coordinated with the local schools here on times of those, currently, we're looking at the week after next for our first daytime lane closures, however, we've had a few night closures for some of the work that we've been doing on Second and Third Street. As far as the median widening beyond the bridges, we have, I'll take that back, go back to Santa Ana River, so Santa Ana River is also another bridge we've been working on here within Norco, I have a little bit more information on that in a minute, but that'll follow a similar process, we'll basically be constructing with the precast girders after we finish the supports in the river, and I'll show you a slide on that in a minute. For the freeway widening, you've noticed probably that we've strengthened the outer shoulders, shifted traffic over, later this month you'll start to see K-rail being placed along the median, basically to protect the workers from traffic as they construct the median paving. The photo you see here in the middle is what we've just constructed at the Limonite area, so it'll look very similar to what we construct within the Norco segment. So basically, this is a cross-section of what to expect here very soon within the limits of Norco, this is similar to what we've had up in the Harupa Valley, Eastvale segment before this time. Early on, early part of this year, we had a lot of coordination with the Horsemen's Association in a trail detour, that's what this map shows, so this detour is still in effect, this will be in effect throughout the life of the project into 2020, but basically, you know, other than having to repost signs that have been taken down, Wayne does a good job of staying on top of keeping everything posted out there, but I think this detour's been working very well, we've been working in the Santa Ana River, the clearing's been done, we're just going to get started on some of the foundation work this month, actually. Just a picture of the Santa Ana River, this is a pretty unique aspect of the project, one of the things that design-build brings is more innovation than maybe a typical construction project, so in this particular case, what you're seeing, it's called a Mijack crane, and the Mijack crane will basically lift up these girders and then take them along the freeway as basically tracks it will run on, on both sides of the existing bridge, and lower those girders into place, and this was seen as a way, a more efficient way to construct the bridge, as well as lessen impacts to the traveling public, and lessen impacts within the river bottom itself. We will still be working within the river, each of those vertical supports you see there in the photo is something we still have to construct, and that supports the span of those girders that will be laying across the median. Once we place those girders, we go in with a steel decking that fits over the top of those girders, and then we pour concrete over the top of that steel decking. So in summary, what do you need to remember from today, basically, you know, three major components of work here, the Second and Third Street Bridge widening, you see the schedule up there, all of these were basically, you know, we've started Second and Third Street before this month, but pretty much the major construction is happening, starting now in September, and then you can see the estimated end dates there, Santa Ana River Bridge will be under construction for over a year, it's going to take a while to build that, then the Norco paving segment, probably about six months or so that we'll be constructing the paving, and by paving, it means we have to excavate, do the earthwork first, and then build up the pavement section with the concrete layer being the top layer of that Just a reminder about safety, we ask that everyone please watch for our workers that are out there in the field, they risk their lives every day to be there, we do have reduced speed limits currently posted north of Santa Ana River Bridge, we're currently working with Caltrans and CHP to look at extending that, especially as we're working in the Norco area. What we're aiming for is basically all 15 miles of I-15 will be at a 55 mile an hour speed limit with fines doubled in the work zone, we hope that enhances safety, we don't think that that's too much to ask to help our construction proceed safely. We ask the public to allow extra time for lane and ramp closures, checking our construction alerts, a slide on that, I can show you how to do that here very simply, but also be aware that there's other projects within the corridor, the two major ones that I mentioned, and then one last thing, we are funding additional freeway service patrol, these are the tow trucks that you see out there, basically, we're covering the limits of the project in basically all hours of the day, because we have a no-shoulder condition on the inside, and that's throughout the corridor and weekends as well. So I know that this works, because I just tried it myself the other day, but this is a new feature that we have, you can just text 15express to that number up there, 22828, and it will ask for your email address, and you will immediately get an email back that says that you've been added to the construction alerts, and I highly recommend that everyone do this, it's just a great way to be informed of when closures are coming up. We basically send out a construction alert every week, actually it goes out on Thursdays for the following week closures that we're looking at for the project. And lastly, just a way to stay connected, there's different social medias here that you can access, we also have the helpline number up there that you can call, and someone will get back to you. That concludes my presentation, be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, start doing your questions. Ruben?
You seem, I would hope so.
Robin?
David, thank you very much, I know that a lot of folks are concerned right now with schools starting and the traffic on Second Street, and, you know, it is what it is, hopefully it won't impact them too much, but that's the major issues that they have, is on-off Second Street with going to the high school and then to the college at the same time, so just keep that in mind when your crews are out there trying to get done in a reasonable time.
That message has been shared and continues to be shared, in fact, introduce Wayne Brown over here with me, he's our public outreach coordinator, he's been at all the schools and keeping them informed as we go, and there's been, this, the schedule's pretty dynamic, so we've kind of changed the schedule back and forth, but we've found a way, at least till now, to not have to close during the school hours.
And we appreciate that, thank you, thank you, David, appreciate it. Moving right along, the wildfire mitigation and grid resiliency, public safety power shut-off by Southern California Edison, Eileen?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you about our wildfire mitigation, safety, and grid resiliency efforts. Today, I also have with me my principal manager, Chris Abel, he's right here, we're here this evening to talk about the new normal, with the new normal of a year-round fire season, we are now experiencing an increase in the number of fires and the intensity of these fires throughout the state, so tonight, Chris and I will provide an overview of the number of safety practices our company has implemented and continues to implement and enhance to mitigate fire risk and made, make our grid more resilient, so Chris will begin the presentation to talk about some of these things that we're doing to reduce fire risk, such as system hardening, and then I will expand on the public safety power shut-off program, so Chris?
All right, thank you, Eileen, thanks for having us here today, as Eileen said, my name's Chris Abel, Principal Manager for Public Affairs for Southern California Edison, I manage all of our public affairs efforts in the Inland Empire, so all of San Bernardino and Riverside County, so I'm happy to be here tonight, if we could go to the next slide, or can I do it here? Oh, awesome, thank you. So first thing that we want to make sure everybody understands is wildfire mitigation for us is not new, this is, Eileen talked about the new normal, you know, lots of wildfires in recent years, I think eight of the most, 15 destructive have happened in the last couple of years, wildfire mitigation is not new for us, we have lots of things that we're going to, that we've been doing for a long time, I'm not going to go through all of these, but there's a couple things I want to point out that are actually pretty neat, so on that first kind of banner there, you see the automated re-closer blocking, so that's kind of a complicated term, but basically what that means is, if you know anything about electricity, our system has the ability, so if a balloon flies into the line, if a squirrel runs across the line and trips the line, our lines have the ability to test themselves and then turn themselves back on, basically, if they get tripped, well, we also have the ability to turn that function off in certain weather conditions or certain conditions, so if the, if the line trips itself off, it won't turn itself back on in certain conditions, and that's actually a safety measure. So I'm going to talk about fire-resistant poles and covered conductor in the next slide, so I'll get to that. We've been bolstering our situational awareness capabilities, what this means is that we've been installing weather stations all throughout our service territory, we have, we now have four meteorologists full-time on staff, we have our own emergency operations center, which we've had for years, but we have a 24-hour watch office that is watching our system 24 hours a day, seven days a week, I'm going to talk a little bit about vegetation management and what we're doing there, Eileen's going to talk about the public safety power shut-off, it's a scary term, basically what it means is we have the ability to proactively shut off the power in certain conditions, it's not as scary as it sounds, Eileen will take you guys through it, but, but that is a practice that we have had for years, it's not new, we've done it twice in the last decade, both times we did it in idlewild, so again, none of the, none of this is new, we're just kind of reassuring folks and re-letting people know what are the things that we're doing for wildfire mitigation. I think I lost you again. All right, so I'll go through this pretty quickly, a couple things that we're doing actively right now, what you see up on the top left there is the hardened system, so we're replacing- So we're replacing a lot of our wood poles with composite poles. One of the problems here is that supply and demand does not exist for, or does exist, it's the problem for composite poles. There's not a big enough supply of composite poles out there for us to do these change-outs as quickly as we can. So we are getting to them as fast as we can get composite poles in. So this is something that's going to be going on for a number of years, but that's one of the things that we're doing. Down at the bottom, you see that current limiting fuses. So this is a little complicated. Essentially, what this means is that we have smart fuses that if those fuses are feeling themselves some sort of trauma, they can shut down the line, or they can prevent current from continuing to go through the line. So we are installing these fuses on all of our lines. At the top, this is probably the most exciting. This is covered conductor. This means that we're actually putting, replacing our current lines with lines that have a cover on them. Now, the important thing to know about them is those lines are still dangerous, right? Just because they have a cover on them, we want to make sure that people are not out there touching them if they fall down. But if they do fall down, they're going to be able to be resistant to, you know, catching the ground on fire, catching debris on fire, or things like that. And as you can see, we're installing about 4,000 circuit miles of covered conductor over a course of several years. So this is pretty exciting, too. Let me go to the next one. So I touched on this briefly. We've been installing weather stations. I think we have, we have 64 of them installed. We're going to install about 200 of them around our service territory so we can monitor the weather very closely. I mentioned we have four meteorologists on staff right now, full-time employees. The situational awareness center, I talked about that. That's our emergency operations center. It's staff 24/7 by a group that we call the watch office. They're watching our system. They're seeing where the outages are. They're watching the weather conditions, all of those types of things. On the right-hand side there, we've been installing fire monitoring cameras. One of our cameras actually was the first to catch the recent holy fire, and so we were able to alert the Riverside County Fire Department, Orange County Fire Department, about the fire before they even knew about it because one of our cameras caught that. So we have cameras all over our service territory that are monitoring for fires so we can be as prepared as we can be. Next one. Vegetation management, this is a big one for us. So we have over 20 certified arborists on staff at Southern California Edison with over 800 pruning contractors. So we have folks out there inspecting and pruning trees every day of the week. We inspect about 900,000 trees annually, prune about 700,000 of them. We, you know, last year, we removed 39,000 trees. We're using some technology. There's talks about this LiDAR technology, which is advanced laser surveying of our trees and our bushes and things like that. So this is certainly something that we take very seriously. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Eileen to talk about the public safety power shut-off. Again, public safety power shut-off, and Eileen will talk about this, this is our last resort. So this is, again, we've done it twice over the last decade. We have 50,000 mile square, square mile service territory, and we've done it twice in the last decade, if that gives you any idea, you know, how often we do something like this. But it is something that we can do. It is something that we are reinforming our customers about. We're coming out and doing presentations like this. We've been doing community meetings. It's something that we take very seriously, and I'm going to turn it over to Eileen to talk a little bit more about it.
Okay, as Chris mentioned, the public safety power shut-off, or PSPS for short, enables us to proactively shut down certain circuits if it is in an area where we feel there's a threat for a wildfire. Out of 207 cities that we have, that we serve, 125 of them have circuits that have been identified to have the potential to be shut off during a potential wildfire. As Chris said, it, we take reliability, as an electric company, reliability is one of our top priorities, along with safety. So the fact that we need to de-energize is not something that we take lightly. It is a last resort. If we implement all of the different practices to harden our grid, if we need to take an extra step, we will start looking at the possibility of a PSPS incident. As you may recall, in December of last year, I actually contacted the city manager, the assistant city manager, the mayor, and the public works director on the night of when we thought there would be a PSPS incident. The good news is, we now have something in place that allows us to communicate a PS, the potential for a PSPS ahead of time. What we will be doing is, four to seven days in advance, when we start receiving data that there is a potential for extreme weather, we'll start doing our weather modeling along with other data to see, you know, what the likelihood is of a PSPS. This is when we'll have a heightened alert of what the weather conditions are like out there. As we get closer to that potential extreme weather forecast, three days in advance, we'll start doing our weather modeling. We'll refine that, and as we get closer to it, that's when we'll start communicating with our government partners and our customers to let them know that there is the potential for a, for PSPS to be implemented. This is really important for us because two days in advance, this is when we speak to our customers or when we notify our customers, that's when they'll be able to put their emergency plan into place. But also, we want to make sure that we communicate with our government partners so you can take a look at the operational practices that you also need to put in place should a circuit go down, whether, should a circuit need to be de-energized. And then a day in advance, if extreme fire weather conditions are imminent, that's when we will continue to stay in, we will, of course, stay in communication with the city to let them know that there is this potential for a public safety power shut-off. Also, at the same time, we will also, we will also activate our incident management team, which is housed at our EOC located in Irwindale. And then the day in advance, we will continue to coordinate and communicate with our local government partners and also with residents. And then if it looks like we are going to do a power shut-off, we will continue to communicate with our customers and also with the city. You will be provided with a number so that you can stay in communication with our EOC or our liaison officer, and you will most likely hear from me. The good thing is, at least we will have been communicating, you know, three to four days in advance, unlike what we had in place back in December when I was contacting you on the night of. Some of the things that we, that help us decide or help us determine if there is a PSPS that needs to be implemented, we start looking at things like red flag warnings. Those just provide another heightened alert for us. Just because there's a red flag warning, it does not necessarily mean that we will be shutting down power. But this is when we start looking at things, like if the wind is moving at 15 miles per hour and the humidity is less than 25%, we'll start restricting certain types of work that we're doing out in the field, and then we'll also start requiring patrol out on the lines that have been identified as a potential PSPS circuit. And then at about 40 miles per hour, we'll start looking even more closely at these circuits, and we'll start deploying more of our crews out there to monitor the field conditions. Just because it is at 40 miles per hour, once again, it doesn't necessarily mean we'll be shutting down power. We'll be looking at the conditions and the environment of that area because a lot of things will, we will look at a number of things, such as the vegetation for that area, the fuel, and different field conditions. And every circuit in every city will be unique as far as the environment goes. So just because we have these general guidelines, it doesn't necessarily always mean that we will shut it down. But these are the things that we will be looking at to determine if we do need to implement PSPS. Other things we also consider, like I said, we are doing this in real time. So our goal is to always try to communicate with our partner agencies and also with customers. But sometimes, things happen, and like I said, it's in real time. But the other things that we also will look at is working with our government partners. We will work with our fire management experts out in the community. But before we do implement PSPS, we do want to get some input from our cities, our state fire authorities, and our emergency management personnel. Some of the things that we want to hear from our cities, as far as input goes, is we want an awareness of your mandatory evacuation routes or voluntary evacuation routes because we want to know that if there is a route that could be affected by a circuit being de-energized, we want to be able to work with you on that. We also want to make sure that we are not impacting any of your essential services, such as your public safety facilities, your EOC, or your evacuation centers. Here we are. Like I mentioned earlier, if it looks like, about a day ahead, if it looks like we will be implementing PSPS, we will activate our incident management team prior to the event, and the city would have direct communication with the folks that are at our EOC. Your public safety personnel would also be able to have direct communications with them. And as I mentioned earlier, you know, one of the key things is really staying in close communication with our government partners and our customers so that they are aware ahead of time that there may be a PSPS incident that will be implemented. And then one of the things that we are doing is, we are continuing our wildfire outreach activities. One of the items that we have been doing is mailing out letters. They're called dear neighbor letters to customers, residents, who live in a high-fire area and have a circuit that have, that has the potential to be affected. So I received a mailer. I think there's one posted on the city website so that you can see what it looks like. I can also send one to you. But everyone that has the potential to be affected received a letter. And one of the important things on that letter, it asks customers to please contact SCE to provide us with their most current contact information. Because the way that we will contact customers is either by phone or text. So we want to make sure that we have your most current information on file. We also have a website, so if you go to the SCE website, we'll have, we have all of the information there about our wildfire mitigation efforts. We also continue to have community meetings. We had one recently for the area last month. And then we continue to do city council presentations. And then we are also meeting with various groups, whoever, you know, whoever's interested in hearing more about our wildfire mitigation efforts. We will go to community meetings, meetings with staff. So we're here to do that. And then, of course, we're working with traditional media to answer any questions and provide more information. So I hope that provides more information about our wildfire mitigation efforts, and if you have any questions, Chris and I are both here to answer them for you.
Thanks, Eileen. Scott, I'm going to go to you. Do you have any to add to this, since you are our first-to-go guy here?
Good evening, council staff, members of the public. So we had an initial meeting a couple of months ago with Edison, and I think it lasted about 30 minutes with senior staff. Just a couple of the topics, we would, of course, like to know what circuits they're looking at in the city so we can identify those areas of concern for our residents, as well as our fire station and EOC. We asked for those circuits at that time when we're still waiting for them. And then additionally, with the, with the evacuation routes, those are very dynamic, and those occur typically at the command post at the time of the incident based on a multitude of factors with my, with my partners from the sheriff's department. So as always, we're absolutely at the table with our partners, and we look forward to additional dialogue with them and other public safety agencies.
Okay, so Eileen and Chris, I think you've got their comments, and cheer your work with them.
Okay. Yeah, from my understanding, I thought they were provided at the meeting. So I'll email them. We also have the GIS layers so that you have those.
Bringing it back to council, Berwin, anything?
I just had one question. What was the size of the area you've mentioned a while ago, Chris, that you guys, your service area here?
50,000 square miles.
How many?
50,000.
Fifty thousand square miles. Okay, thank you. Good presentation, both of you. Thank you much.
Robin? Greg?
Good evening. Thank you for your presentation. And Eileen, I have a couple of questions, and maybe for Chris, though. In this presentation, is this primarily like remote areas wildfire, or would it, is there some overlap into community?
Yeah, so the basis for this was, so the California Public Utilities Commission identified, with the help of CAL FIRE, identified high-fire risk areas throughout the state, and they ranked those into tiers. Tier three being the highest risk, tier two, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So we then took that information and figured out where our circuits were that were in those tier three, tier two, et cetera, et cetera. So in general, I mean, there's, you know, the high-fire risk doesn't discriminate, right? It's kind of, it's kind of everywhere. I mean, in general, where the wind blows the hardest is in more remote areas, right? But there's no rhyme or reason to why certain areas were picked. It was based 100% off these high-fire risk area maps.
Okay, so, and I guess what spurred that comment was that on your hardened systems, where you had mentioned a lot of your poles now are wood, and then you're going to a composite.
Right.
Where in a remote area, it wouldn't seem to me that you would use wood poles in a remote area, and that's why I thought maybe it's coming back to a local level.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Okay, so when you talked about hardened systems.
Right.
You said you are changing out your wood poles.
Right.
To composite poles.
Right.
Are you, is that a large magnitude of wood poles in remote areas, or is that more in the local area that you are referencing?
Yeah, so most of our, yeah, most of our distribution poles, and remember, we have transmission and distribution. Transmission are the bigger towers with the higher lines. Most of those are steel because they're taller and they carry heavier lines. Most of the distribution poles, which are the ones that come to the homes and the businesses and City Hall, almost all of those throughout our service territory are wood, whether they're in a remote area or not. So those are the ones in a high-fire risk area that we're looking at changing out.
Okay. Just curious, what's the melting point on composite?
I'd have to get back to you on that one. I don't know.
I'm just curious on that, how well that would hold up. Then, most of your comments here on vegetation management are also applied to remote areas? Or is that also local areas?
It's local. It's throughout our service territory. We are, we are looking at vegetation.
Okay, because one of my concerns is, and this is on a local level, that I would question if you ever had an arborist in our town, it seems to me that... if you ever had an arborist in our town, it seems to me that when Edison trims the trees, and I'll leave this on a local level, that you accelerate the death and the disease of the trees. And we're finding that now we're having to remove more trees. So I believe you do a lot of damage locally when you're trimming the trees in your right-of-way and under your lines, and that you add to the dead and dying trees. And then we're forced with removals. And then I think just overall, I'll just make one overall comment, that I do appreciate your presentation, and with the two projects that we have under concern with the Hidden Valley reliability and the Circle City project, that I think this makes a very good case for us to, that these lines should be underground. Thank you.
Yeah, so thank you. If I could just first respond to the tree issue. So I will certainly take that back to our vegetation management team, understand that, you know, that is not our intention. Our, you know, our first priority is the health and safety of the public and keeping those, that vegetation free from our lines. And so, but I will certainly take your comments back. As for the two projects that you mentioned, so just keep in mind, you know, you guys can do whatever you want.
Yeah, it's not related to this, right?
And remember, those are transmission and subtransmission lines.
That's correct.
Which are the taller towers, which aren't affected by the P S P S process.
I understand that.
Okay.
I appreciate that, Chris.
But thank you.
Thanks.
Eileen and Chris, thank you very much. I hope you get back with Chief Lane, and we get this, all the information exchanged properly. So we do rely on Cal Fire, along with the Sheriff's Department, in case of emergencies for evacs and things like that. So that's very important, that we keep that information up. Fire season is 365 days a year, it seems like anymore. It's not just now, even though, you know, we used to always think of this. But we're going to come into the Santa Ana soon again, I'm sure, in October, so we want to have as much information and reliable information to give for our residents. Well, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, if you can indulge me, I've got one more presentation. Mary Catherine, come on up, and Lee, thank you, come on up, look at the. We went through all the hard ones, now we get to the next one.
The fun one.
The fun ones, okay. For those of you who didn't know, next, we got this, and it's a Constitution Week. So, Aaron, as we're the fun-loving city we are, and the patriotic city, as you can tell by red, white, and blue, along with the numerous veterans events we have, along with the memorial, so with that, it's very fitting. And let me read this proclamation, and I'm not going to put all the whereas's in, I'll give you the first one. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardians of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and September 17, 2018, marks the 231st anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document as its memorable anniversary. And it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Ted Hoffman, the mayor of the city of Norco, on behalf of the city council, hereby proclaim September 17 through the 23 as a Constitution Week, and ask the Norco residents to reaffirm the ideas of the framers of the Constitution in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardians of our liberties, remembering that the lost rights may never be regained. With that, thank you, gals, very much. All right, appreciate it. We'll go in front of that podium real quick. Do you have anything more?
No, we're, Lee Clappy is a resident of Norco, and I'm a resident of Corona, and we're with the Daughters of American Revolution. And the Daughters were the impetus of Constitution Week. President Eisenhower signed it into law. And so we try and just bring, you know, remembrance and acknowledgement of our great document every year.
And I'll be presenting on September 19 in my full colonial costume to his class. They have a PowerPoint, and we're going to talk about Daughters of American Revolution. Excited about that? So anyways, eighth grade honors kids, you know.
I think one of the best things you can do in honor of Constitution Week is, if you're not registered to vote, or if you know people that aren't registered to vote, we have an election coming up this year, and that's the most important thing, is get your friends, your neighbors, if they're not registered to vote, get them to vote, because that's the important thing. That's the true American thing to do. All right. Matt's going to get one more picture. Well, Andy, I told you it would take till 8 o'clock to get them all done. All right, now we're moving on to city council business items. City Council communications reports on regional boards and commissions. Berwin, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We heard the presentation on the I-15. One more item on the R C T C is, we got worried about, three weeks ago, that the California Transportation Commission approved the loan, the money, funding for the widening of, did you ever been through Moreno Valley, up the hill to Beaumont, very dangerous little road there? Well, they've been trying for years to get lanes added there for trucks going up and trucks coming down, getting them away from the cars. So they got the funding approved for that, and the project construction will start in the near future, because they've been working on that for years and years. So that's good news. With R T A, which, both commissions were dark this month, but we had a subcommittee meeting today for R T A. They're getting ready to take delivery on 64 new dial-a-ride buses that they ordered last year. They'll be coming in pretty quick, so you'll see some new ones running around. And with Vector, same old story, lots of mosquitoes. Then they are treating, treating an area over here across the river by Eastvale that's been a problem for years. There's one pond over there in the river, causes lots of mosquitoes, they find a lot of west Nile, kay and mosquitoes in that area there. Luckily, there's only been one person, I think, in the last two years over there that's had the west Nile. But they do treat that area, along from there, all the way past Silver Lakes going east, they treat it about every other week. So they are trying, and bad that we haven't had any rain to help the firemen out and everything, but the less rain we get, the less chances of getting infected mosquitoes in the area. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Robert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things to report. The first one is, the unload committee met last week, and I'm excited to announce, we will be hosting a town hall for the young people in Norco in March at Nellie Weaver Hall to have an interactive event for them regarding the dangers of drinking and driving. And the timing of it is right before spring break and prom season, so we're really looking forward to making an impact with that committee for the youth in our community. We also had the city schools committee meeting. We had an update on Norco Elementary. That's pretty much in the finishing up phases for that school. If you have a chance to drive by, it's turned out absolutely beautiful, and the improvements that they've made to that school are pretty amazing. Norco Intermediate is scheduled as the next project. Many of you know that that is long overdue for that particular school. So we were shown the drawings that have gone out for bid, and they should be starting that project in a couple, like, in a year or so. So we'll see some improvements there. One of the big ones being, they're extending the parking lot to get a lot of that traffic off of the street. And then the last one, the Norco Fair went quite well. I would like to report that the sale for the children and students that participated in raising the livestock was very well supported by our community. And I'm happy to say that a lot of community organizations and businesses stepped up to make sure that our students got very good prices at the sale. So I would like to publicly thank all of those that supported our students and our children at the sale.
Good job. Greg?
Thank you, Mayor. Last month, we had our special board meeting for the Chino Basin Disalter Authority. And basically, what we did was move forward with an addendum to our mitigated negative declaration and approved design of the dual-product water line. And this is where we're bringing a water line across the, or boring underneath the Santa Ana River. And then we went ahead and executed the final construction contract in the amount of $2,450,000. And right now, we are still being geared to start construction in January and hopefully finish up in March. And then we have another board meeting tomorrow afternoon, and we may be bringing back some information that will require a council conversation. But I'll keep the city manager posted on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Greg. I attended the unity meeting for the school district. That is where all the cities meet with the Corona, Norco Unified School District, and all the partners that are associated in trying to deal with that risk children, and to make sure there's plenty of things for kids to do and to keep them straight, and also all the educational sports programs. The city has been involved with that through our park and recs department. So it was a good opportunity for us to share with the school board and the other cities what the city of Norco has been doing over the years to do that. Again, I want to thank the Norco Fair Committee, along with the Norco Madapasi. The end of August and the beginning of September, we highlight this city, and it is great to see the number of people that turn out for the fair and the rodeo this week. And we put Norco on the map for that time. Another thing that is coming up, and for those of you with high school students, we have opened up, and we are taking applications for the Norco Youth Advisory Council. This will be our third year doing it. In the last year, we had a lot of fun with those kids, and they came in and they did a mock city council meeting. I think they learned a lot, we learned a lot. And this is an opportunity to get your high schoolers involved. And this is, I know Mayor Pro Tem Grundmeyer, this is one of the things that she wanted to see happen when she got elected, and it is, it works. And those kids that participate really did a good job. I want to remind everyone, on September 11, at Station 47, that's the one on Hillside, we'll have Patriot Day. Scott, you know what time that starts? What time the activities?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty, eight thirty in the morning. I know, remind me, because I have to be there. So eight thirty in the morning on September 11, please, this is Patriots' Day. This is a time to remember everything that all the first responders did. One of the things I also attended today, and I want you, for those of you residents, and to keep a lookout for or to be aware of, the Norco College is embarking on a, potentially for doing a new study called phototonics. And today, I attended the regional consortium at the Corona Chamber of Commerce. This will be a new high-tech study project that they're contemplating to do here at the Norco campus, and to listen to some of the speakers. This will bring us into the 21st century, as far as our students and the opportunity for people in this area, and especially the whole region, for high-paying jobs, high-paying technical jobs. And so it's in the F and C stages, so just wanted to bet you aware that these are things that is happening right down the street at the Norco College on Hamner. So, and third, and so just keep an idea, keep an open mind on it. We are, and I always say, we're going to keep an open mind on it, cautious, because anything you do, and on the campus, will always affect us. So we're going to keep an open mind on it. And tomorrow, I get to go down to Temecula and listen to the state of the county, and I will bring you back that information at our next meeting. And with that, include that, and move right on into our agenda. And city council consent items.
Second.
You got a first and a second?
I'll have to do a verbal roll call vote. My apologies. Councilmember Hannah?
Yes.
Councilmember Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Grundmeyer?
Yes.
That motion carries 4-0.
Okay. Now we're entering into the public comments section. This is a time when persons in the audience wishing to address the city council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Please complete a speaker card and hand it to the city clerk, so he can be recognized. Do you have any cards?
Yes, Mayor. Pat Overstreet?
And just a reminder, it's three minutes.
It includes your walking deck.
Ooh, John, don't go there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Pat.
Members of the council, staff, and residents in attendance, I'd like you to know that the rural organization, the Norco Horsemen Association, is going to host a candidate forum at Nellie Weaver Hall on the 20th of this month, 6:30 to 9:30 p.m., and I'm hoping you will all attend. The Riverside County Supervisory Candidates have been invited and are supposed to attend. And I know that Bonnie sent invitations to all five of our city council candidates, and I hope they've all RSVP'd to attend. Eric Linder will be there, and our mayor from Corona will be there. And I see some of the candidates in the office in the room tonight, and I'm hoping they will all attend. And the following Thursday, which is the normal, usual rural meeting on the 27th at the Sixth Street Deli, we will be having as guest speaker Bill Assalee. He's running for the State Assembly. Assemblyperson Cervantes had to decline the invitation, but I encourage everybody to come out and meet Mr. Assalee. So I hope you'll all attend, and I do have flyers I've passed out in the room, and there's some out on the outside table. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat.
Tara Toland?
Good evening, Tara.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and council members and staff. I think you recognized me from the last meeting. I'm here again to voice my concerns and frustrations over an issue that I'm dealing with, with the neighbor. It's been three weeks since I've talked to you, and in those three weeks, this neighbor started doing more tractor work, this time just playing tractor boy on the weekend and moving dirt around. It appears that he has no intentions or no plan in order, other than to just move this dirt around. And this time, he moved it around all right, and he literally dumped buckets of dirt on my property line into the chain-link fence, damaging the chain-link fence some more. And my frustrations are, I don't understand how it is that he is getting away with no permits. I was told in April of 2017, he needed permits. I was not told until Monday of last week, the 27th, that he's I was not told until Monday of last week, the 27th, that he's not required to have permits, and I don't understand why, since I've tried to do as much research I can on city code and ordinances and understanding what he needs, but I can't seem to get answers from anyone to tell me why it is he does not need them. When I read certain sections out of the codes that say he's required to it if he's moving around dirt, based upon either size or height or whatever, other sections that, under my understanding by reading the sections, that he is violating as well, is that it's affecting adjacent properties, and he's continuing to affect adjacent properties, mine. And now that he's actually dumping dirt into my property, and I don't know if I can show you visuals or not in this meeting, this is my court presentation Friday, when I take him to small claims, whether I'll be successful or I'm not. The bottom one or the middle one, the large one, is a photo from the work he did on the 23rd of June, where he piled it up. The top one is what was the result of the other day, and you'd have to get close to see where he dumped the dirt, the rocks, the debris that is sliding down. And I have an entire book of more photos, seventy-some photos, that are going to be my presentation to court, that shows the dirt, debris, rocks and stuff that are coming down into my yard. Now I will have to worry about mud sliding. Before, I had to worry about just the water. Now I have to worry about mud sliding. And as you can see from the photos, that's right where my horses are, and it will be coming down. He's about anywhere from 10 to 15 feet higher in elevation than my property. And I can't seem to get anybody to explain to me so that I understand where I'm wrong in getting this guy to comply. As far as I know, there's no time limit, so this could go on for another 10 years before he does comply. And I've been told that all he's been asked to do is comply, take down the wall. I'm also being told he does not need to compact that dirt. That was dirt that was brought in. That was not original dirt to that property. And now all he's doing is piling it up into piles. It's not covered right now, so he's also in violation there where he's not keeping dust or anything else down. I have videos, I have pictures of him literally dumping dirt along the fence line, going through the fence into my yard, and he was not doing dust control then, when he was dumping. And I called, I have witnesses to that. The weekend code enforcement girl came out, however, she wasn't immediately available, and so she didn't get to see him doing it, but I have videos and I have pictures.
Okay. Tara, I don't, Steve isn't here for our code enforcement, and I don't know if you've talked to him?
I did, on the phone.
Okay, and so you talked to him, but maybe Brian, you could...
I'm not going to talk to him.
Okay, okay, so you talked to the city manager?
No, I've had emails, and that's it, two emails, but I've not talked to him.
Okay. I don't know what else to say, because we can't comment on him.
I know, I understand. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Bonnie Slager?
Good evening, Bonnie.
Hi. I too, as Pat, want to invite everybody to Candidates Night, and as of this point, I have a yes that four of the five candidates will be there, and I'm hoping that the other candidate will agree to be at Candidates Night on September 20th. And also, anybody in the audience would like to submit a potential question. We're gathering questions to be asked of the candidates, so if anybody wants to submit a question, please either give it to me or to Pat Overstreet. Also, I wanted to remind everybody about the Navy Birthday Ride that's coming up October 13th, Saturday, October 13th, and I think that's going to be a really fun event to celebrate the Navy's birthday and have a ride. And lastly, the NHL Trail Elves were out working, and I would like to apologize, they broke a water line, and I know Chad's not very happy, and we have been suspended, so I would like for acceptance of our apology, and I would like permission for us to continue doing trail work. Thank you.
I'm going to ask Chad.
Harvey Sullivan?
Good evening, Mayor, council and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. First of all, I'd like to commend the Fair Group for a fantastic fair that they put on this weekend. They had a lot of events and a lot of concerts and a lot of different things going on, and a lot of good food, and I'd just like to thank all the volunteers that worked at and put in a lot of hard hours. I know it's long and thankful, but I appreciate it, and I know a lot of people appreciate it, and thank you for the great job you did. And I'd also like to thank Lieutenant Riddick for the recent DUI checkpoint that they conducted over a period of somewhere between 15 and 20 days, and I think he came up with about 650 that you stopped or went through, and they actually, three, had three DUIs. Well, that tells me the program is working really well if you only had three out of 650. So advertising it ahead of time and letting people know you're going to do it, I think, really kept a lot of people off the street and kept our streets safe, so thank you very much for that. I'm still a little concerned that the last meeting, I got up here and I spoke about the Ron Mueger case, and in the minutes of the meeting, it said that Harvey Sullivan was concerned about the way it was handled. I was a little bit more than concerned about the way it was handled. I was concerned about each and every one of you up there. You didn't do your job and go out and investigate it and make sure that this man got his constitutional rights. We're just talking about the Constitution here a few minutes ago, and some of the rights are guaranteed on the Constitution, and his rights have been stepped all over. And I know the lawyer told you that the case was in litigation, and you couldn't discuss the case, but it didn't stop you from going out to look at information and look at the facts that had been provided to each and every one of you. And so I don't know what you're going to do about it. This lady just came up here and just talked now. Mrs. Tolan, I believe she was at the last meeting and spoke about that also, and I believe you, Mr. Mayor, told her to go see the planning director. Why don't you go out there and see what her problem is and see if you can't help her fix it? She's been going on, it sounds like, for quite a few years now, that she's having a code problem. Here you've got an old man over in the buff over there that's 74 years old, that can't fight back, and owned his home, and you were ready to take his home and put him on the street and make him homeless. It cost him $90,000. You could have stopped it on August the 15th, 2017, when he was inspected and found it all clean, except for a laundry room that was questionable, whether it had been signed off or not, had a permit on it and all that. Each one of you looked at it, four of you. Berwin was furnished the papers in his package. Each one of you was hand-delivered a package and looked at it, and it was questionable, questionable whether the city had a right to hold that over its head. Well, it's cost him almost $30,000 more beside the $50,000 that he had to pay a lawyer to keep him from taking his house and making him homeless, and he's about to get through it.
Can we wrap it up, Harvey?
But you know, what did you guys get elected for? To serve the people? Well, some of you aren't doing a very good job of serving it, and you'll make sure that a lot of people know about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes public comments.
Okay, having that, public comments is closed. Bring them back up here. Moving on to discussion action items regarding item number five. This is, this actually is mine for staff. Next week, three of your city council members will be going to the Lego City, I don't know if Andy, if you're going or not, Long Beach, the Lego Cities, California Cities Conference in Long Beach. Part of the agenda is the cities, the other cities in the state use the Lego Cities as a, more or less their own lobbyists, to fight for what cities can and can't do, trying against some of the legislation up in Sacramento. And one of the resolutions that I feel is very important that we, as a city of Norco, support is the resolution of the League of California Cities calling upon the League to respond to the increasing vulnerabilities to local municipal authority, control and revenue, and explore the preparation of a ballot measure and/or the constitutional amendment that would further strengthen local democracy and authority. This was started, and believe it or not, by the city of Beverly Hills. You would think that they'd have the money and the wherewithal to fight it all, but it gets to the point where this is trying to prevent Sacramento overreach throughout the state, and that's what these cities are doing. And what I'm asking is that the resolution that you all have in front of us is to, we as a council, like various other cities that have previously done it, to include the cities of Arcadia, Burbank, the cities of Ontario, and the city of Cupertino, Cupertino, Duarte, okay, I'm not going to rule those seas, along with the city of Oceanside, the city of Palo Alto, the city of Redondo Beach, the city of Santa Cruz, and that is that we also developed a letter in support of the League of Cities, calling for this resolution. Again, this is the League in trying to, because the League believes in self-governance is a cornerstone of democracy, our strengths are lies and unity of our diverse communities of interest. Sacramento has this one-size-fits-all philosophy, and it's got to stop. We have an involvement of all stakeholders in establishing goals and solving our problems, not just those people up in Sacramento. Even though we elect them, sometimes they do what they want to do, no matter what we tell them. We want to conduct, and this is from the League of Cities, in conducting the business of government with openness, respect and civility. The spirit of public service is what builds communities. Open decision-making that is of the highest ethical standards, honors and public trust. And this is very important. Cities are the economic engine of California. The vitality of cities is dependent upon their fiscal stability and their local autonomy, and the act of participation of all city officials increases the League's effectiveness. And this focuses the advocacy and lobbying as the most effective through partnerships and collaboration. And then again, well-informed city officials being responsive, responsive visionary leadership and effective and efficient city operations. So what I ask is that we, as a city, join other cities in the League, and at our conference next week, I will present our letter to them during the meeting to concur with them and ask if the city council concurs with me. So with that, Berwin O'Sullivan, see if you have any comments?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, because I've read this thing through and through twice, and one good example of why we should back the League on this was that FB 649. It was a year ago next week when Brian and Kevin and I went to the League up at Sacramento, and we got word that they were going to vote on that 649 over in the assembly. And that's where they had to go put these, allow them to put these cell towers down there by your sidewalk, wherever they wanted to, then the city wasn't going to make any money off of them. So the three of us went over there and contacted our representatives in this, in our area and the surrounding part of the county to get them to vote against this, and they didn't. And the next morning, it shows here, there was 300 cities and 47 counties represented, and Kevin and I were out there on the steps of the Capitol Building with all these people protesting that this thing didn't get passed through the Senate. Well, they passed it too, but the governor evidently paid attention to the League on this, because when it went to his desk, he turned it down. So the League does have a voice up there, and I think that, and that's just one bill that's an example of what they've killed or helped kill. I think it's very important that we write a letter and give it to the League next week down there, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had one question and then a comment. On page 13 of the report on number four, it talks about some of the major legislative proposals that they've had, and it talks about getting something done, because we don't know if the next governor's going to have the same philosophy as Governor Brown. So my question would be, in your meetings next week, what is their goal for putting a measure on the ballot or trying to get that done, or can we get a timeline from the League of Cities on moving forward if this passes at their convention? And then the only other comment would be, in reading all of the letters of support, I understand the necessity of having a form letter, and sometimes it's just the volume that makes the impact, but I would request if we write a letter that we put in some language that's very specific to Norco and the impacts for Norco, so it's not just the same form letter that it looks like most of the cities have generated. So, and that's all.
In answering the question as far as the ballot measure, that will probably be brought up during the meeting.
Right.
And...
So you'll just report?
I will be able to report on that. They have their first conference on Wednesday morning, and then they vote on everything Friday.
Okay.
So I'll know more by then. And I agree with you, I don't like form letters either. We'll make it personal for us.
Okay.
Because of what Sacramento's doing, and that's why I wanted a consensus from us. And Greg?
Thank you, Mayor. I certainly do support this resolution, and in regard to Senate Bill 649, how bad does a bill have to be that Jerry Brown vetoes it? And then I agree with the Mayor Pro Tem's comments on writing our own personal letter. So I'm all in favor of this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there any cards on this matter, Cheryl?
No cards on this item.
No cards, having no cards. Bring them back here. I don't have anything further unless somebody else in the council, I'll entertain a motion that we...
I make a motion that we write our own letter instead of using the form letter, that we support what the League wants to do and that you turn it in to the League next week at their meeting we're going to.
Okay. Have a second? I have a second. We got a first and a second, so we need to vote.
That motion passes four zero.
Thank you. Item number six, this is city council and city manager's staff communications. Greg, let me start down there with you. Anything?
Yes. Thank you. So I'd like to put all you guys on the spot. September 29th is the Fourth Annual Barbecue for Pediatric Cancer Research, and we can get a table for $500.
Is he going to pay $100?
I was thinking, since Kevin's not here...
He could pay 400, and we split the...
We paid it, yeah. Yeah, we each kicked that in. So I don't want to put you on the spot, but would, it's a table of eight for $500, it's a good cause, and we've done it every year.
All right.
Okay, I got a Robin.
All right, you got me.
You got a Ted.
Won't be there, because I have a kid's buddy rodeo, but I'll be there.
I'm good.
Yeah, I know. Knock the dust off your wallet, buddy.
You hear this in the middle of the public, that's really tough.
I'll go ahead and handle it.
Yeah, I handle it.
I'll handle it, okay. That's all I have right now.
You could explain that Mike's trying to raise a million dollars for cancer research for children, and he has, his own son suffers from pediatric cancer, and so he's taken upon himself through a pair of carpets to do this, and I know that I support him along with Greg, everybody in this... And I know that I support him along with Greg, everybody in this council supports what he's doing up there, so thank you for bringing that up.
You're welcome.
John, anything else? You got more?
Yeah, we have three extra seats, so I know Brian, Andy, and, you know, another staff member will contribute also. John, thanks.
John, anything? All right. Andy?
Nothing.
Robin?
Just real quick, wanted to report that about a week and a half ago, Bob Tolman, who is a famous rodeo announcer, came to Norco after the San Juan rodeo to visit my son's steer, and we took him to the Veterans Memorial, we took him up to Ingalls Park. The man has been to several rodeo grounds and all over the country, and he said Norco is quite an amazing little place. We took him to Saddle sore for dinner that night, and he had nothing but positive things to say about Norco, so it was nice to have somebody come see this quaint little town and see how special it was, other than just us. So, it was nice having him here.
The Voice of Rodeo, I betcha. Berwin, anything?
Yeah, well, he's been to the biggest ones in the world. He's been the announcer of the year several times, but I forgot to mention a while ago about the parade, we're talking about the fair. And even though our fire chief was absent that day, he was represented in the parade. Greg and Ted and I made sure of that. Thank you.
And there's video to boot. Lieutenant?
Nothing.
Come on. Anything, you guys, excellent job over the weekend keeping it, so, very good. All right.
Give it to the sergeant, he definitely is on board.
Okay. Cut, anything?
Ron and I rode that bowl more than eight seconds. I think we set a new record. All the way down Sixth Street. Looking for those buckles. I have nothing.
Thank you. Gina? Brian?
Let's just echo Patriot Day.
Patriot Day, you betcha. Chad? Matt? Cheryl? Okay. Just a reminder, the Norco Youth Advisory, also, September 21st will be our first POW MIA Day up at the Veterans Memorial, since we dedicated our new monument. That'll be in line with the national recognition of that. And Chad, I have one other thing, because this occurred, comments that I have, and this is for the Streets and Trails Committee, a lot of residents there by Belgium, and I know it's the opening of school at the college. If you can, can you probably, just on your agenda for Streets and Trails Commission, look at the parking situation up there, Alpha Belgium, in the backside? Are you familiar with the other, the entrance, it's not an entrance, the emergency exit back there on the backside? There used to be a lot of parking violations in there from the college campus, and that impacted the residents. You'll probably find small records on it. Some of the residents, again, it's the opening of the school, so just maybe take a look at it, see if the Streets and Trails Committee would like to look at that.
But what is the issue?
It's parking. They park on the streets, they don't want to pay the permit to park on the campus, so they flood the streets with their cars, and the residents have no place to park. So, just, it might be an enforcement problem, but I don't think there's any signage up there either. So, we just, if you can get a chance, just take a look at it and see if it's worthy of the Streets and Trails, or look at it, the commission. It's been battered around by this council for several years, but I think it's, maybe just look at it and see what, some new minds can think about it over there with your commission. Thank you. And with that, I'll adjourn.